I will go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education. It's Monday, June 28th, 2021. It is 6:04 PM. Let the record show that all board members present except for Dr. Fegley. If you will, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Appreciate everyone coming out this evening that's in our audience. Before each of us, we have an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Jeff and Jared, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. First up this evening, we have recognitions with terrific Tigers. Dr. Glass.
I don't know that we have any terrific Tigers. We had two from May. Randy, you're always terrific. We had two from May, but I don't think they made it this evening. Move it on.
All right. So next up, we have information proposals, comments from the audience. Beth, do we have any requests? All right. So next, after that, is informational reports. First up, Board President's Report. And I don't have anything. I'm just happy not to have to wear a mask. So we made it through summer school. That's even better. So, super tennis room. Dr. Glass.
Well, we're officially closing out the chapter this school year. I'm very excited to move on. This year, probably more than ever before. And I'm proud of our faculty and staff for all the work, hard work, keeping us in school all year. I know you are too bored. They went above and beyond in a lot of different respects, and I'm just so proud of them for all their efforts. I'm also very proud of our budget. Ms. Dudek's going to present tonight. We're in a very strong financial position. We'll talk more about that in a bit. And thank you to Lindsay and your team for getting us to this point. As you know, we have posted our first version of Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Service Plan. I sent that out to the Board in one of the Friday updates. We will continue, and that is posted on our website, too, by the way. We will continue to make adjustments as needed, but for the most part, as we've discussed previously, we're ready to go back to life as normal next school year. You know, taking precautionary measures, washing the hands. We'll have hand sanitizer, social distancing, that good stuff. Masks will be optional. You can wear a mask. We're not going to prevent you from wearing a mask, but they are going to be optional. And then, of course, our faculty and staff are prepared and ready to go virtually if necessary. If we get a strand that is difficult to deal with and we get some infection rate, then we'll go virtual, just like we did last year. We'll be prepared to do that. We just wrapped up another vaccination clinic on one of our campuses. We vaccinated over 115 people last Wednesday at the junior high. Huge thanks to all our friends at Broadway Pharmacy who have continued to be such great partners as we do what we can to help put out an end to this pandemic. And that's all I got. Questions?
All right. Anyone have any questions? All right. Next up, Support Services Report.
Evening, Gordon. Before you start with the big service, you're looking at our federal reimbursement comparisons for the last four years. And if you flip over to the second page, you kind of see where we're at, where our student count was, meals served a number of days. And so by going to CEP, we're still doing very well. But our real benchmark on CEP is we're able to put kids, meals in front of kids, practice day lunch is free for all. So I'm very excited about how CEP has worked out for us and so forth. Moving on, a couple of things I want to update on with summer projects are moving along very well. We were just hitting headfirst in a lot of things. Buildings are finished up the summer schools, so we're able to get, or almost all buildings are not quite ended this week, though. We will be, we're moving along with getting those buildings in shape for next school year. Several of our bigger projects, refishing the gym floors, those wooden floors, resurfacing those, waxing, cleaning, so on and so forth. We're working on some plumbing projects within some of our buildings. We're doing all this in-house right now. You'll also see some concrete projects coming up this summer, widening of entrances into some of our parking lots. For example, Franklin and Elmer Schrader, the very narrow ones, how you have pools, we're widening those. So it'll help out with kid account, with our student dismissal systems that we utilize, so forth. Safety and security, very excited to let you know, one of our grants that we have that we were awarded, our third assessment team grant, Cape Girardeau Police Department, early part of August, we're going to be going through active shooter training with their entire department. Multi law enforcement agencies will be represented there, Cape Girardeau County Sheriff, Missouri Highway Patrol, and Jackson PD will be utilizing some of our buildings. So area law enforcement officials will be going through. We are going to open that up to our staff as well. It'll be voluntary. If they want to go through and role play, be students, be teachers, be victims, be perpetrators. So we're very excited about that. That'll just be a whole nother level of Alice training that we currently do every year in our buildings with staff. We also have a team of six of us that will be attending the National Safe Schools Conference coming up soon. Hope to get a lot of great information from there, bring it back to our district, and utilize that. So unless there's any questions concerning comments, until a little bit later.
With the safe schools training, is that something that the Board could ever sit in on, on some of that?
Absolutely. Mr. Cook has been a part of it. He's gone through part of the presentation before. He asked, I can give that to you if you'd be very, you know, if you'd be interested in doing that. Every building in our district goes through mandatory Alice training every year. This past year was a little bit different because of COVID protocols. We weren't able to go through the scenarios. So it was just videos and verbal presentation. But with going back to pre-COVID guidelines to an extent, we're going to start implementing all of our scenario-based training as well, too, where teachers go through that process of what it's actually like to barricade their rooms and, you know, if you're mature, were to come along and enter. And that goes along with Crisis Go training as well. It's an app that we utilize here in our district, too.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Board Reports. First up, MSBA Delegate Report. Do we have anything come in?
This is Dr. Fegley.
Yeah. Do you know Casey, did she?
No, didn't pass anything other than--
Or legislative?
Legislative, I do, yeah. Yeah, just that there's a special session that's back open with the federal reimbursement agreement where they're still arguing, trying to figure that component piece out. There's also the Medicaid expansion. Then again, both these hit the general revenue fund, which in turn hits our funding. So just want to keep eyeballs on that. And House Bill 349 is on Parsons' desk, waiting to either be signed or vetoed. So, and we want it vetoed.
We did write a letter as a district.
Okay. So on the Medicaid expansion, do you know, so there was a judgment that came down this past week that the courts said it was unconstitutional, even though it was a constitutional amendment that was voted on by the public? So--
That's everything I've read, and that's about as clear as it got. That's all I saw.
It comes down to it was a requirement without a funding mechanism attached to it.
So that's why it was unconstitutional, because there wasn't funding?
There wasn't a funding mechanism identified.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Cook? No. All right. We will move on to Cape Public Schools Foundation. Ms. McDonald.
Okay. Let's see. Yeah. Okay.
There you go.
All right. So I just wanted to report tonight, just a couple of things. One, we had purchased $6,215 worth of playground equipment for Alma Schrader that will be being installed over the summer. They are going to probably start on that this next week. We received an SEL and Action Grant from Rockefeller Philanthropy. An education first is a one-year grant totaling $7,500 for tiger lilies. So that's good news for this next school year. And then we raised funds at Penguin Party 2020 for our Grow Your Own Rising Educator Program. And we held that money and got some additional donations. So this summer, we paid 14 students at the high school to work that are interested in teaching, career in teaching, to help in our buildings, teach our students, help teachers in the classroom. And so that totaled $9,895.89. So that was paid. And we will then raise money again for that program this Penguin Party, February 12th, 2022. So anyway, that's all I have.
Any questions? No. All right. Thank you. All right. That concludes our Board Reports. Next up, we have non-action item, first reading of Board Policies. So as you know, periodically, MSBA sends out policy updates when statutes change or issues change. And we go through a committee process where a committee comprised of two board members, myself and Dr. Fegley, and several administrators and teachers all get together and they review the policies, make changes if needed. And then, once they approve them through the committee, then they come to the Board for first reading. And then the next month, they come back for a second reading and then a final vote. So this evening, we have several policies, first up being Policy AC, Prohibition Against Illegal Discrimination, Harassment, and Retaliation. We have AH, which is Use of Tobacco and Vaping Products, and the description of the changes are on your summary. Next one is BBFA, Board Member Conflict of Interest in Financial Disclosures. The next one was BCB, or Board Officers. And the next one is DK, Payment Process. And the next one was EBAB, Hazardous Materials. The next was EBBA, Illness and Injury Response Prevention. And the next one was ECG, Animals on District Property. The next one was IGBCA, Programs for Homeless Students. The next one was IGCD, Virtual Courses. The next one, IGCD-A, Missouri Course Access and Virtual School Programs, or MOCAP Courses. And the last one was JG-R1, Student Discipline. So all of those are for the first readings. And again, these will be brought back next month for any changes. So if you haven't had a chance to look at them, or if you see anything you have questions about, please feel free to reach out, and we will get answers. Or if there's any changes that you would recommend, again, you can contact Dr. Glass or myself, and we can take those changes forward before we approve them next month. Anyone have any questions? All right. So we will move into Approval of Consent Agenda Items. This month, we have Minutes of Previous Meetings, May 24th, 2021. There's two sets. And June 14th, 2021, Payment of Bills, Agreement with Kenny Rogers Center for 2021-22, Facilities Use Agreement with Boys and Girls Club, Bakery and Bread Products Bid, the Dairy Products Bid, Food and Kitchen Supplies Bid, Pest Control Bid, Fire Protection Bid, Waste Disposal and Recycling Bid, and Banking Services. Do I have a motion to approve those consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Glenn, Mr. Ritter, any discussion?
Just want to acknowledge--
Yes, I say--
Phil Moore in the audience. His bank, he represents Pantera Bank. His bank was recommended to receive the depository bid. He won it by submitting no fees for our banking services and 20 basis points for our investments. So Phil, I just want to say thank you. Commerce has been a great partner with us, but we're looking forward to working with you as well.
Thank you. Us as well.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Moore? I do have a question about the Facilities Use Agreement with the Boys and Girls Club. So there are two facilities that they use. They use the house over by the maintenance--
We call it the White House.
The White House? Okay. And where's the Explorer?
It's the building, main building--
The Explorer right next to it.
Oh, okay. All right. And how many students participate in that program currently, do we know?
So their numbers were down this year because of COVID. And that was, I could break it down for you per facility, but Boys and Girls Club actually operates within, Boys and Girls Club, Southeast Midlary actually operates within Cape Pope Schools and Scott City Break Schools. So there's a side of Scott City Pope Schools. And then with Cape, they operate at House of Hope, they operate at Seminary. Occasionally, they'll have kids at those buildings, but that's not a day-to-day site for their kids. Due to, this past year, they limited the number of students that they were able to accommodate. So it was roughly about 100. Skeptically, it's twice that school year, at least those leading up. So they're looking at their numbers getting even larger next year. There is a push to increase the enrollment here in the next several years. Part of that is Jefferson Concept as well, too. Does that as a facility as well, too, that can be utilized, too.
Okay. But do we have a general number of how many students there typically are in our facility?
No, because it's only for special programming that they would go over there.
Okay.
It's not for day-to-day use.
Okay.
A lot of the times that it's used is more often just office space for them for logistics, and they'll bring a few groups over, groups of 15 or so.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? All right. So the items-- Oh, my computer. So the consent agenda items, again, are the minutes from two previous meetings, Payment of Bills, Agreement with Kenny Rogers Center, Facility Agreement for Boys and Girls Club. We have bids for Bakery and Bread Products, Dairy Products, Food and Kitchen Supplies, Pest Control, Fire Protection, and Waste Disposal and Recycling Bids, and then our Banking Services. If there's no further questions, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items are approved. Next up, we have our business items. First up, we have a motion to approve the addition of Girls Golf at Central Senior High School as a Misha-sponsored activity starting in the fall of 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cook? Jared? Discussion? Dr. Glass?
So up until this point, our girls that wanted to compete in golf competed on the boys team. They were at a disadvantage because they had to compete from the boys tee box, of course. It's Tyson, Coach Shumoyers, our athletic director, said, hey, would it be a possibility for us to add a girls golf team? And I said, you check out the interest, see what there is, and I'll certainly take it to the Board. Well, he did that. And this past year, we had, of our 15 golfers, we had seven which were girls. So there is significant interest, just what we have at high school now. And he went and pulled the junior high, too, and there was a lot of interest down there. I've had a couple of parents come and ask me, hey, would this be a possibility? Because my daughter likes to play golf and love to be, have her be a part of the school team. And so that's kind of where we're at. I think it's great, getting more kids involved in athletics. And it's really not that big of a hit to the budget. I think it's under $10,000. So I don't see any reason not to move forward with the girls golf team.
So is it false sport?
It is false.
And the boys are--
Sorry.
Yep.
And the country club is happy to host them.
Awesome. How many other schools around have girls golf?
He was--
Jackson, Notre Dame.
He was reaching out to try to get more schools involved in a girls golf team. So we're more competitive, reach out.
The Notre Dame girls team went to state tournament--
Last couple of years.
Last few, yeah. They've been a pretty good program.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Further discussion? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the addition of Girls Golf at Central Senior High School as a Misha-sponsored activity starting in the fall of 2021. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Program is approved. Good job. All right. Next up, we have Motion to Authorize a Superintendent or His Designated Negotiated Contract with Brock Miller Construction Incorporated for Renovation and New Construction at Jefferson Elementary with a Base Bid Including Alternate Number One for $11,297,000 and to execute the contract on behalf of the Board. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Glenn, Mr. Ritter, discussion? Dr. Glass?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge Colin Rogers with Brock Miller Construction back there. I'm going to thank him for his bid. He was the low bidder. His company was the low bidder at our bid opening a couple of weeks ago. Their base bid came in right at $10.7 million. Very happy about that. I was a little nervous about where they might come in at with the material prices escalating in these past few months. And he did us right. He's got some good subs on this project, so I feel good about that. We've come a long ways. It seems like we've been discussing this project for multiple years now. And if you, I'm going to take you down memory lane just for a second, but if you remember the whole discussion about rebranding Jefferson Elementary School, making it into a school that we can be proud of, and a magnet school, and something that could revitalize and change a community, something that I personally witnessed down in East Lake Elementary in Georgia. That's where this whole concept came from. And the city took me down there as part of their overall project with Purpose Built Communities. And I just fell in love with it, the conversion. And the area was just, it used to be riddled with crime and prostitution and drugs and very violent crime. And they were able to take that community and do an intentional focus around housing, healthcare, and education. Those three components is what makes up Purpose Built Communities. When I got off that plane and was talking to my administrators on the plane ride back, we knew that we could do something similar to Jefferson, and the timing was right. And we just got really excited. So we began to initiate that process of rebranding Jefferson. As you remember, you know, we kind of renamed it as JE Elementary School. We put new leadership there. We put some, we made it an Apple School. We put some very deliberate things down there to make it more than just Jefferson Elementary. Because there was a certain stigma attached to Jefferson Elementary. And so we knew it could be better, and we wanted to raise the bar. And as you all know, a high tide raises all ships, and that's what we intended on doing down at Jefferson Elementary School. It just so happened, coincidentally, that the city was, the city was involved in discussions about aquatic centers and what they were going to do with the parking rec vote that was coming. And we put our heads together, and we thought about it and said, how powerful would it be if we could connect that to one of our elementary sites, or one of our existing school sites, and capitalize on that partnership and those dollars? And so that's what we did. And so the city passed their parking rec tax, the school district passed their bond issue, and then we came to the crossroads, where do we put it? You know, the school district was committed, and if we were going to be a partner, it needed to be on school district property. Where could we invest this kind of money that would have a tremendous impact on a community that needed resources? And so here was the community center idea. It was kind of born there. We ultimately, thanks to you, Jeff, chairing the committee for how do we divide the money up, we came up with a two-pool concept. And I don't want to lead anyone astray, but it's more than just a pool. It is a community center. It is a center that is going to be utilized to serve kids in a variety of capacities. And I don't want that to, that point to be dismissed. It is more than a pool. It's not just for recreation. It is for community to come together, to revitalize something that I think has been, you know, left unattended for far too long, that we really need to concentrate on some of our underserved students. And that is why this Purpose Built Community means so much to me. And so we ultimately decided the two-pool concept. We've got the bubble that we're still committed to. That is our 50-meter pool over here on the junior high campus. But we also decided to attach a leisure, more of a leisure pool to Jefferson Elementary School and make it a community center with a new gymnasium, a new cafeteria, a new kitchen, and a new preschool center. All of that combined, I think, is going to serve that community extremely well. We know that the research shows us that if we can get to some of those students early with our pre-K, that we can turn that around. You know, we can improve their reading scores. We can improve their achievement scores. Their social and emotional health is addressed. And that's what I hope to do with this whole community center, is that we offer more than just programs for kids, but we also programs for adults as well, you know, whether that be in the pool, or financial classes, or resume building, or just invite them in for socials and things of that nature. I really see this as being a community center. And that's exactly what I saw down at East Lake. That's what they did down there for their school building. And it made a world of difference. They were able to convert that East Lake community and turn it around. And now it's one of the most desirable places for parents seeking an education for their students. And so with that said, you know, I'm proposing that we move forward with the Brock Millers bid of 11.2 million--
$2,970,000.
$2,970,000. I don't remember the letters. Which encompasses all the components that we were looking for. Now, you know, we're a little bit over where our bond issue would allow us to be. But thankfully, we've got some stimulus dollars that have come in from the federal government that are targeted for things of this nature. We're talking about feeding kids again. When we closed our school campuses, we were able to feed hundreds, if not thousands, of meals every week out of those facilities. So that, we're talking about our kitchen and our cafeteria. And so we're also looking at mental health and wellness in these. We're looking at clean air in our school buildings. The HVAC alone on this project's a million dollars. You know, there's a big chunk of change right there that can be addressed through this. But I think this project is going to be so impactful and so meaningful for this community that it's well worth our investment as a Board. And so I'll leave it at that for discussion. Josh, did I miss anything?
Anyone have any questions?
So remind you, Dr. Glass, on the bubble, the city is going to do, put a certain pool of dollars towards renovation of the bubble. And are they putting a pool of dollars towards Jefferson Elementary Pool as well?
Yeah. So we both allocated $2 million to both projects. So our $2 million is going to go, well, $4 million is going to go down to this project, $6 million is going to go to the bubble.
But that's not what the people actually voted on?
What that people actually voted on?
That's not what the people actually voted on, though.
Absolutely.
You made that quite clear at the beginning. That's that, thanks to Jeff Glenn, you decided to split the money up. That's not what the people voted on?
Well, we did have to reach a compromise. I mean, our intent--
But that's not what the people voted on.
Our intention was--
It was accurate description. It was not voted on that way. You said, thanks to Jeff Glenn, you decided to split the money. That's not what the people, you and the city came together and had this great idea. But thanks to Jeff Glenn, we had another concept because this Cape Central was not repairable. But now, for a sudden, it is.
And that didn't follow Jeff, if you would like.
That's what y'all sold us on. That's what we voted on. And now y'all just told us that that's what you changed it to. Thanks for making that clear. That is not what the people voted on. But thanks to Jeff Glenn, y'all are hidden the other way. You made that very clear.
I'll call the question.
Okay.
Let's put it to the Board.
All right. So the motion on the floor is to authorize a Superintendent or His Designated Negotiated Contract with Brock Miller Construction Incorporated for renovation and new construction at Jefferson Elementary with a Base Bid Including Alternate Number One for $11.297,000 and to execute the contract on behalf of the Board. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is passed. Next up, we have a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that Cape Girardeau 63 Board of Education authorizes to transfer from the General Incidental Fund to the Capital Projects Fund, 162,326, or 7%--
Doesn't matter.
--the maximum amount of 1.972944. The excess funds will be earmarked for the Jefferson Elementary Community Center and are estimated to be spent by June 30th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Glenn, Mr. Ritter, Dr. Glass?
Yeah. So basically, what this resolution will allow us to do is transfer from our general revenue fund over to our capital projects fund. We've got plenty of reserve sitting in our general revenue-- We've got plenty of reserve sitting in our, our General Revenue Fund of roughly twenty-four, twenty-five percent. We need to start shifting some more dollars over to capital, cover some of our projects that we're wanting to do for the district. So that's, that's all this is allowing us to do is go over and above what we're, on a typical year, what you're able to do is transfer from your general fund to your Capital Projects Fund, your expenses. We're, we're doing six hundred thousand dollars over our expenses and transferring over to Capital Projects Fund, just to build that fund balance.
Anyone have any questions? Alright, so the motion is to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that Cape Girardeau sixty-three Board of Education authorizes the transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund, the maximum amount of one point nine seven two nine four four million. The excess funds will be earmarked for the Jefferson Elementary Community Center and are estimated to be spent by June thirtieth, 2022. If there's no further questions, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Next up, we have a motion to amend the 2021-22 budget to reflect actual expenditures, revenues and fund transfers through June thirtieth, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cook, Mr. Glenn. You're going to win.
I'm gonna turn it right over to Lindsay.
Thank you. Hello? Is this on? Is it on? Okay. So we are estimating this year to end at a twenty-four point oh nine percent fund balance. That would be for the General Fund and Special Revenue Fund. For our district, this is a really healthy fund balance. It's the highest it's been since I've been here and I think since Dr. Glass has been here as well. Kind of how we achieve that is our revenues that we received this year were right on target. We did receive some federal stimulus money that is in there and that is helping that. And every year we have unspent budget for our expenditures. We kinda plan on that. That's been a consistent thing that we've had and this year was no different. So this year we spent about ninety-five percent of our expense, our budgeted expenditures. We have in here to transfer one point nine million to the Capital Projects Fund, just to kinda start getting the Capital Projects Fund built up so that we can cover expenses that we know are coming next year for sure. But at this time, we have healthy fund balances that we're able to do that.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Duda? Hearing none, the motion is to amend the 2021 budget to reflect actual expenditures, revenues and fund transfers through June thirtieth, 2021. If there's no further questions, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Next up is a motion to adopt the salary schedules as presented for the 2021-22 school year. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Glenn, Mr. Ritter, Ms. Duda.
Alright, so you have salary schedule books in front of you and we are recommending to give all qualifying schedules a step and an average increase of five percent. This is something that we've really been working on for years now actually, is to get our salary schedules where they're more competitive. And with our fund balances being healthy, we're at a better place to do that right now. So what this does is it increases our teacher's salary schedule, one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So our first year teacher's salary will be thirty-seven thousand, six hundred. And that was an average of five percent and the, that percent was then applied to all the other schedules as well. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
Pretty competitive.
I would like to say that's, that's the biggest salary increase we've had.
This is the biggest salary increase we've had since I've been here, but our staff deserves it. And we've been working really hard to get it here.
Yeah.
I know you normally don't take questions from the audience, but I have, can I ask one question or is that, have we gotten everyone moved off the old schedule and on the new or is there still, is there still something hanging on? Okay. I know we had you getting close. I was just curious if we were there yet. Sorry.
You almost think you were on the board before.
I know.
Does anyone else have any questions for Ms. Duda? So the motion is to adopt the salary schedules as presented for the 2021-22 school year. If there's no further questions, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Good job. And next up, we have a motion to adopt the 2021-22 budget as presented previously. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Glenn, discussion. Ms. Duda.
The 21-22 budget that we are presenting tonight leaves us with an ending fund balance of twenty-three point oh two percent. The largest source of revenue for the district is the local tax dollars and this is a reassessment year for us. So we are projecting a one point three percent in growth, which is approximately three hundred and seventy thousand of new money. We typically have a collection rate of about ninety-eight percent and we kept that the same for this budget. We are also budgeting to put a levy into the Capital Projects Fund for this next year and that will add approximately one point seven million to the Capital Projects Fund. Our expenses have gone up from last year. The largest part of that is our salary expenses and benefits. And we also have some Capital Projects Funds that we are doing and we are replacing quite a bit of technology throughout the district, trying to keep up with that and get a little bit ahead. Our basic formula money and Prop C money is the next highest revenue contributors that we have to our budget and those were budgeted just based on DESI recommendations. We do have four point three million of SR2 money in the budget. I also have the four million that we will issue in bonds, budgeted under the series 2019. And I don't have a definite timeline on the expenses, so I just kinda made it easy and budgeted the full amount to be expended, but we know that that probably will not happen. There's charts in here for you to review. Our largest area of expenses is salary and benefits and we, and instruction. We have a three-year comparison of revenues and both expenses and our debt service schedules are in the back. The district currently has fifty-six point two million outstanding in general obligation bonds and will be making five point one million in payments this year. And we have a levy that goes to the debt service fund to help us make those payments. And we will be receiving just a little bit of subsidy revenue from the government for that as well. Does anyone have any questions about the 21-22 budget? There's been a lot of oversight, I think, from Dr. Glass, from the administrators. The principals do a great job. It's really, you can really tell in our fund balances that they are watching the budget, trying not to add things and it has allowed us, I think, to get to where we are right now.
I'd just like to comment that having a fund balance of twenty-three percent, one of the, one of the significant things in that is that for a number of years when we didn't have a fund balance at that level, we would have to take out a tax anticipation note and would have to pay interest on that note every year in order to be able to cash flow in the early months of each school year. And by getting our fund balance up to this point, which we have now for two years, is this the second or third year?
The second.
It's the second year. We will not have to be able, not have to take out that tax anticipation note, which means that we'll save that interest, which essentially is about a teacher's salary during the course of, of the year. So kudos to administration for their, their fiscal constraint and fiscal management of the budget to place us in a position to be able to avoid having to take out that tax anticipation note.
Anyone else have any questions, comments, discussions? The motion on the floor is to adopt the 2021-22 budget as presented. If there's no further questions, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget is approved.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. So that concludes our business items. Next up, we have information proposals from board members. Anyone have anything? So I just wanna, for point of clarification, so with the whole Jefferson project, so this whole thing started about three years ago. So the city passed or asked the taxpayers to pass the parking wreck and sewer drainwater tax funding proposition, of which four million dollars was earmarked for.
Six.
Six million?
Six million.
Was earmarked for an aquatics facility because they knew down the line that the bubble was not going to be functional. So they wanted to look into a new pool. So that came about, about three years ago. About six months after that.
That was actually more than three years ago, wasn't it? Time flies, I don't.
I thought the last one was three years because then in December, then we formed the.
We did ours. There were two separate.
Right, we formed the, the committee to look into replacing the pool.
Well, there were, there were actually, there were two separate bond packages passed. The, the city passed their bond package and identified six million dollars for an aquatics center, did not say where that aquatics center would be. And then the school district passed our bond issue with four million dollars and said it would be at Jefferson Elementary.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
That's, that, absolutely it's true. Go back and look.
You can look at the Southeast Missourian, you can look at the.
Go back and look at the election language. The city.
Did it not say that the Cape Central Pool was non-reparable?
No.
They didn't, nobody said that?
That was not, that was not.
I don't, I don't know if they said that in theirs, but, but I do know that. When the, when, when the city passed the six ma-, the, the parks and wreck and storm water tax issue, they identified, they earmarked six million dollars for an aquatics facility, but did not say where that aquatics facility would be. When the school district passed ours, we earmarked four million and said it would be at Jefferson Elementary. And that's where the confusion is.
And so that equals how much?
Ten million. That's where the confusion is.
Ten million for aquatics center at Jefferson?
No.
No.
No. Four million for an aquatics facility at Jefferson, six million.
Y'all decided it would be at Jefferson.
Of course.
You just said that.
For our portion.
For your portion, it would be at Jefferson.
Yes.
That's where the.
It could be somewhere else.
And I understand, that's.
Just changing, but keep going. We all know what happened.
Hold on, I'm trying to. Let me say something real quick. So what happened, the people on this board actually advocated for Jefferson Elementary, which is the kinda crazy part. I actually thought you were gonna go a totally different direction when you raised your points because if not for Dr. Glass, there's no way this would be a Jefferson Elementary.
I know, we know that. We know that, thank you.
Right, I'm just making that point.
Thank you, Dr. Glass. I just wanted to, to miss that part.
And, and. And I think when bids came in, I realized you couldn't. You couldn't build an Olympic-sized pool.
Nobody asked for an Olympic-sized pool except for this man right here.
No, that is, that is very inaccurate.
And that's not true.
The citizens of Cape Girardeau wanted a pool that was just like the one existing.
But I'm grateful for all you're doing. I'm just saying, I'm scared about all the money's going to all the other schools and the difference in your fixing the driveway and stuff like that, but time is finally coming. Y'all are doing the right thing. We appreciate that, but it's, it was a shitty way to get around to it.
If, if I may, and, and you'll notice that I've not interrupted you one time. And please, if I may, I chaired a committee. It was the committee's decision to do the two pool concept. It was not my decision to do the two pool concept.
How did the two pool concept come about?
We began to study what we could do with the ten million dollars that we had available between the six million that had been passed by the city parks and wreck and the four million that we had passed through our bond proposal. And so this committee took a look at the needs of the community as a whole and how we could address all of those needs. And it became apparent to us that we were not going to be able to address the needs of the entire community with one facility. And so that's when we started taking a look at how can we meet the needs of the most people in our community? Because we have a number of different groups who all had an interest in this project. And so as the committee took a look at that, the two pool concept began to emerge. And, and, and honestly, the two pool concept, when people say that's not what we voted on, I understand there's confusion, but in fact, six million dollars was voted to go toward an aquatic facility without any location identified. Four million dollars was identified to go to Jefferson and that's essentially what we ended up with.
But I saw the flyer, I saw the flyer that we passing out, that they were showing what they were gonna do at Jefferson. I saw the flyer with my own eyes.
And that was on.
So that's, you can't say, well, we don't know where we're gonna put it. You done made a video of how you want it to look.
That flyer.
That was just a mirage, right?
No, no. That flyer was with our four million dollar campaign, not the four million dollar, our four million dollar bond proposal. There was a campaign associated with that.
Because the central pool is not repairable. Let's vote for this, y'all. We did.
So that four.
Nine dollar repairing it. Sorry, I didn't.
That's, that's okay. That's okay. This is a di-, this is a constructive dialogue and I appreciate it. That four million dollars went to Jefferson. The six million, the flyer that you're referencing, the six million dollars was passed before that flyer was ever developed. The six million was part of a prior election where the city did a, a parks and a storm water. There were, there were other projects associated with that.
I'm aware of that.
Okay.
I'm just saying, because there, there was a project for, you know, Almater and Jefferson. That's also.
That, that was out of ours. That wasn't out of the city's.
And I'm just saying, you know, it's kinda disheartening to see Almater looking out pretty at Jefferson, you know, having a brick turn, but we getting there now.
I can appreciate, I can appreciate.
We, we, we're there and it's still, we got, you know, shaky ground, but we there. I just want y'all to know that.
I, I can appreciate that.
You know, hearing this and you like, wow, Jefferson, you know, we supposed to do it better?
And, and we're actually taking a little bit more than the four million dollars that, that we, we dedicated through the bond package. We're actually taking a little bit more than that and putting it toward Jefferson to, to try to make it a little bit better.
I mean, y'all making work, y'all, y'all making work. I mean, I understand if people don't wanna come up with it and this man says, this more over us, but I'm just saying, you know, you know, we was shaky getting there, but we got there and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And, and we're dedicated to continuing to, to see that Jefferson School, JE, continue to grow and we're excited about the, the possibilities that are gonna be available.
How many more principals you think we're gonna get?
That's another subject. But, but I want you to know, I, I appreciate the dialogue. I do.
Thank you for filling in my slot.
I'm sorry, that was your, I am so sorry. I am so sorry. My apologies.
No, you're, you're perfectly fine. I just, there's just a lot of confusion out there.
There is.
There was a lump sum of money that was designed to do aquatic center and improve Jefferson Elementary. The first committee was designed to see if we could do that as one big project. As the mon-, as time went by, the money wasn't there to do one big project. It was more cost-effective and beneficial to do two separate projects. And that's how we came to the point we are today. There was never any vote by the people that said, we're gonna take this lump of money and we're gonna put it all right here. It was, this is what we need and how do we get there? Then the committees were formed and we came to where we are today in Jefferson Elementary. I mean, the pictures are beautiful and what we've seen so far, so can't wait to see that and the.
We're excited.
And the pre-ski-, the pre-K.
The community and the school district will very, be very proud. Yes, yes. And, and, and I'll just say that, that we actually put Jefferson in our ballot language, which was different from the other six million that was approved before. When we did our four million, we, we said, this more, this money will be spent at Jefferson.
We don't just make it look like, okay, we got four, the city got six, let's put it over here at Jefferson.
And I, and I think that that was.
Six plus four equals ten. So that's where the ten million.
And I really think that was the hope going in, but, but what we discovered was that.
I mean, we know, sometimes people say things to make things look another way, although we have an alternative plan underneath and that's okay.
We didn't have an alternative.
Everybody gets what they want.
No, we didn't, I want, I wanna be clear about that. We didn't have an alternative plan going in. That, this was not some scheme. This was, this was an evolution.
And I know that the pool was not repairable and I mean, are we, you know.
Well, the reality was there was a lot of other forces out there that didn't want anything to go to Jefferson and wanted the whole thing to be somewhere else. And the district was committed to Jefferson's facility and that's why we have what we're getting today is because this board and this district was not gonna labor, it was not gonna change. It was gonna be at Jefferson, come hell or high was.
Police from Jefferson from SNAP came to Dr. Glass and she proved out some things that was going on down there that.
There was a lot, there was a lot of.
Oh, no.
But I'm, but I'm. Let's, let's, let's not, let's. You know what?
When I said SNAP, Felice, did you shake your head? Did Felice?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Let's vote.
But I'm saying that the board has been committed to Jefferson the whole time.
Come on, y'all.
So the, so the whole point is, the city and the school district have come together to work together to provide services that serve all of our citizens within the city of Cape Girardeau. And it's going to be two different pools. The pool we have now is going to be renovated and we're putting a brand-new facility down at Jefferson. So no shenanigans going on, there's no broken promises, there's no.
Yeah. And honestly, even though I.
In fact, they're getting more out of it. I mean, originally, there was no way we were going to be able, be able to build a new 50-meter pool to service swim teams and the high schools that use it and the community members that want to do triathlons and stuff there, because that was going to have to be torn down and be a smaller pool. So this is kind of the best of both worlds. And I don't know why so many people are all up in arms about it, but that's a whole different discussion.
And, and this is the last thing, this is the last thing I'm going to say.
But they're getting.
Is, it, it's okay. It's, this, even though I chaired the aquatics committee, I will be honest with you, the most exciting part of the Jefferson project for me is not the pool, it's preschool. That's the most exciting part for me. I, I can't wait to see what happens there.